Good evening, and the Plymouth Township Board of Trustees meeting will come to order. It is Tuesday, April 10th, 2018. Mr. Clerk, please take your role.
Trustee Dorshavitz.
Here.
Clerk Vorva, here. Trustee Dempsey.
President.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Kirby.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And welcome to the safest place in Plymouth Township right now. I think we have more police officers than regular guests. That's great. In keeping with our theme, the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, I'd like Bob Ontell to lead us in the pledge. Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Okay, next, Lieutenant Brothers, if you could come forward. We have the swearing-in of new police officers and promotion of two existing officers. So Lieutenant Brothers, who is here tonight on behalf of Chief Tiddrington, will take the lead on this with the assistance of the clerk, I believe.
I'd like to have Lieutenant Dan Kudrow come forward. I'm just going to say a brief thing about each one of them. Dan hired into the Police Department in October of 2000, promoted to Sergeant in September of 2011, and he was recently promoted to Lieutenant in January of 2018. And then Sergeant Ruphard? Brian Ruphard, he hired into Plymouth Township in January of 99 and was promoted to Sergeant in February of 2018. And Josh McLean? Officer Josh McLean was hired into our Police Department in August of 2017. And Officer Matthew Brothers, he's not related to me.
Not related?
Everybody asks.
Much better than that.
Right. He hired into the Police Department in October of 2018. And Officer Brian Burnett. Brian hired in with us in December of 2018. So at this time, the three new officers will turn around and be ceremoniously sworn in. Sorry, not turning around. Same here.
I.
Aye.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the laws and ordinances and policies.
And the laws and ordinances and policies.
Of the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
Of the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of police officer for the Charter Township of Plymouth.
Of police officer for the Charter Township of Plymouth.
Be never mindful.
Be never mindful.
That my service is a reflection on.
That my service is a reflection on.
The Township of Plymouth.
The Township of Plymouth.
And I will discharge these duties.
And I will discharge these duties.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Officers, congratulations.
At this time, I'd like for the important member in your family to bring your badge forward and do the ceremonial pinning of the badges.
Wait a minute, we still got one.
There's always one.
Got to do it right.
No time for sergeants.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good job. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you for your service to our community and for your, especially for those being promoted tonight. We certainly have great expectations and high hopes that you'll have continued terrific service for our community. And we congratulate you again on this significant achievement. At this time, I also have a proclamation by the Board for recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And with us tonight is Cassandra Bulmer. Cassandra, if you could come forward. She is one of our public safety officers, civilian dispatchers. When you call, when you come out, come on up here. When you call 911, these are the folks that you get. These are the people who are your first line of support when things go wrong. And they will help you, they will get you through to the proper authorities, and they'll walk you through the, walk you through the problem to the best of their ability. So Telecommunicators Week is a way for us to join with our colleagues across the country in recognizing and honoring those who are, do such a great service to us 24/7, 365 days a year. We have the proclamation, Cassandra, which I will not read it. Everybody likes to hear that. And if you could take that back to your colleagues across the hall and please share it with them and post it up there on the wall for everybody to see. All righty, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on now to approval of the agenda, we have a couple changes. We have several changes, actually. I would like to remove items G10 and G11. They will require some further review. And I'd like to move item G13 to the top of the agenda, so that will be our first item under New Business.
Mr. Supervisor, I move for the approval of the agenda as amended.
Motion's made by the clerk. Is there any comments, questions?
Second.
There's a second hearing by Trustee Heitman. Hearing no objections, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is item E, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Any comments or questions by the Board?
I did review the bill detail. And I also want to extend my appreciation to Trustee Heitman for switching months and passing on to me a lighter burden than what he had last month, so, thank you.
Any other comments or questions by the Board? Need a motion?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dempsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is item F, Public Comments and Questions. As always, this is not your only opportunity tonight for comments and questions. We do encourage them on all agenda items, especially if they are relevant. And we also have another public comment question period at the end of the meeting. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth McCormick. My address in the township is 45519 South Turtlehead Court. I've come to a couple of Board meetings this year, one in January and February, I recall. And I was asking about this 1% administration fee that showed up on the winter tax bill. Traded an email with our Treasurer. And I understand that the Township Board had the authority to impose this fee and that the Treasurer is duly assigned to collect it. So what I have is a couple of questions. The proposed minutes that I saw from the Tuesday, November 14th, 2017 meeting stated that this administration fee was going to be used, or was needed mainly, for assessing and treasury functions. And I hope that's what it'll be used for. Now, I went to a Supervisor Coffee and Muffin Session. Thank you Supervisor Heisey.
Welcome.
And I thought I heard the comment from someone, I don't know who said it, was that this fee was going to be dumped into the general fund. And I'm a little concerned about that. How am I going to find out if this fee that was imposed on me is properly used for assessing and treasury functions? Is there some line item on this E3 that'll show me where this is going to be, going to be used? I didn't see anything.
So the Treasury Department and the Assessing Department are both included under the general funds. When people say this money is going into the general fund, that's true. We are allowed by state statute to charge an administration fee up to the cost of executing the assessing and treasury functions. So if the assessing and treasury functions, for example, cost us $100,000 a year, that's all we could charge with the administration fee. Okay?
Okay, so I remember in this proposed minutes, or I heard some figure it was over $600,000 that was expected to be brought in.
Roughly like $620,000.
Is our treasury and assessing fees close to that?
It's, yes, when you factor in real estate space, utilities, all those types of allocated costs, plus the salaries, plus the benefits, it comes to a little over $650,000.
All right, well, I did ask in January for this Board to rescind this resolution. That didn't happen, to my knowledge. I wanted to know if, have any other Township property holders declined to pay this fee?
No, nobody declined to pay the fee. I had probably 25 to 30 people who had questions about it. I answered phone calls, I answered emails. You're amongst those 25 to 30.
All right, well, I just want to let you know, I'm going to be watching as a Township resident. And hopefully this money will be spent properly. That's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to item, the new item G1. This is the License Local Governing Body Resolution for the Plymouth Canton Choir Boosters. Jerry, you want to walk us through this?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor and Board. We have with us today Mr. Michael Kloszak, who is the Plymouth Canton Choir Booster Representative, is asking for a resolution to give a charitable gaming license. And because they are located in Plymouth Township, they have to receive this from this body. And Mike is here, I believe. Mike, could you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much for taking your time for this. I'm with the Plymouth Choir Boosters Group. We support the choirs over at the park, Plymouth Canton Salem. Every year, they put on a concert and they hold it at Tony Sacco's, it happens to be in Canton. And they try to raise funds for the SJ5K. If you're not familiar with the SJ5K, it's a run that's done, sponsored through the high school to help raise money for needy families. This year, they're supporting, I think the number is seven, different families with all the monies they'll raise. And so this is just one of the ways we contribute besides participating in the run. So people who come to the concert will be able to get some of their money donated through their sales, but we also run a gift basket rabble, and that's the reason for the gaming license.
Is that the same Super Jess? Is that the?
Say again?
That's not.
It's Super Jess, yes. That's on May 5th, and we're having the concert on May 3rd and 4th. I might have my dates wrong.
Okay, any other questions from the Board? From the audience?
That's a good candidate to seek repeal at the state level. This is a huge amount of red tape that organizations, we're not adding any value at all here. And it's because of some state law that we have to approve this.
Yeah, I need this in order to then apply to the state for the license.
My recommendation is that they take this provision away. You shouldn't have to come to us, just deal directly with the state. We don't administer, we don't police it.
So who is Parent Booster USA, then?
In order to become a 501(c)(3), we can either do it through our own, hire lawyers and all that stuff, or we can do it through this organization. They help us file the papers, help us make sure that our bylaws are written correctly, they help make sure that we do our paperwork correctly. Basically, they watch over us, they do the work for us. And so then they incorporate us in Plymouth Township underneath their name.
Ah, okay.
Where our president is listed.
Okay.
I believe her name and address are on there. It's on Canton Center Road, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Need a motion? Clerk?
I move resolution.
I move resolution 2018041020, the Local Governing Body Resolution for Channelable Gaming License for the Plymouth Canton Choir Boosters.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, who was it?
Kirby.
Trustee Kirby? Any other comments or questions? Do we need a roll call on this?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, please take your role.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes? Trustee Dorshavitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much and good luck with your event. Next up is item 2, G2. This is consider, wait a minute, nope, item G1, Planning Unit Development Ordinance. This is the, actually, this is our final reading of this because the Planning Commission has effectively done the first reading. So we talked about this at the last meeting. If there's any other final comments or questions for Ms. Haw, please provide them at this time.
Are you sure that we don't have to bring it to the Township Board for two readings?
Yes, that is correct. The public hearings have taken place at the Planning Commission. And following this reading and the passing of this resolution for the text amendment 14, it will be published in the paper just over a week from now, and at that point, it will come into effect.
And for either the attorney or for the clerk, this, for publication purposes, is this adopted by reference? We don't have to publish this whole thing, right?
You can do a summary for publication, but it does have to be published within 15 days of the time the Board adopts the amendment. And it will be effective seven days after publication.
Okay, any other comments from the Board, from the public? And Mr. Clerk, when you're ready, I need a motion from somebody.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move to approve the Text of Zoning Ordinance Number 99 in accordance with the Proposed Text Amendment 014 for Article 23, Planned Unit Development, PUD, First Reading, Resolution
Thank you. Motion's been made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second? Second by Clerk Vorva. Mr. Clerk, please take your role. Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Kirby?
Yes.
Trustee Dorshavitz?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes? Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Maybe we should share microphones tonight. Next up is item G2. This is Consideration of Offer for the Five Mile Road Property. The full text of the motion, the proposed motion, is attached with item G2.
This is the same as from several weeks ago, nothing's changed. So you'll, when you say negotiate, what does that mean? And do you intend to come back to the Board for final approval with the negotiation?
Yes. Because the proposed purchase offer is, this represents the purchaser's best attempt at arriving at a mutually agreeable contract. There are certain assumptions, though, that they have made in their draft which are not attainable. And there's other elements that are involved because of the role of the county in providing infrastructure financial assistance. So some of those elements are not reflected in this agreement. I felt it would be inappropriate for me to start unilaterally talking to this group with our attorney and spending attorney money on this project without your, without your consent. And as the motion states, this does not constitute an acceptance of the offer. We reserve, we always reserve the right to act in the best interest of the Township at all times and to accept or reject the final submitted purchase agreement. So yes, it would be coming back to the Board.
I've got, I guess, a couple of questions, questions and/or concerns. The first one is, early in the agreement, he talks about that each acre is worth roughly, I don't have it exactly, $50,000. But included in that price are the enhancements to the water, to the sewer, and to the road. So when you pull those out, you're really not paying $50,000 per buildable acre.
He's using 133 minus something. It's the minus, 70 acres is what it is? That's how he got the math? What's 3.55 million divided by 70 acres is what?
50.
50.
57. Yeah. 50,700. Oh, 57,000?
$50,700, right?
But included in that purchase price is not just the land, it's the water, and it's the sewer, and it's the enhancements to the road. My concern or my recommendation would be to pull out those figures, calculate what you're really paying for the land, and that becomes the amount per acre, not the $50,000. That would be my thought or recommendation. Couple other.
Would that make it higher or lower?
It would make it much lower. Because, I mean, of that 3.5 million, this gets to another point of concern. We really don't have any idea at this point what the enhancements to the road, to the water, to the sewer are going to be. If we sign this contract, it is, we are now on the hook to make those enhancements. The figure, it could come in at $5 million, $6 million. We have no idea what the enhancements to the infrastructure is going to be.
The county has agreed to the water infrastructure. They will not agree to enhancements to Ridge Road, although we do have some other governmental entities that might be interested in helping us there. But based on our discussions and negotiations with Treasurer Sabri, he has agreed to the water enhancements, not the road, and not the sewer, which it's anticipated that the sewer line or lines, we really don't know what the scope of that sewer project's going to look like yet. But the intent is that Watuah would bond for a, and be responsible for construction of a sewer line, which in its most basic form would extend from the existing Dehoko Prison Site and would go all the way west along Five Mile to Napier, and it would serve both Northville and Plymouth Township for future development.
The value of that was 1.1 million?
You know, I don't know what the value of the sewer line is going to be because we are still talking among.
Just the water that Wayne County's agreed to.
Oh, the water line was, I think we pegged it at about 850,000 or thereabouts.
So you, when you negotiate, you may have to cap that, and then anything over, the developer would not be Plymouth Township's responsibility or some, you'll have to have some safety valve so that it's not open-ended five years from now or whenever it gets done. So I have a, I have a whole lot of things to talk about when you're ready. Somebody else can go first.
Let me just, I have two more questions. We did have this property assessed initially. Do you remember what the original assessment was?
4.1.
And did that include, did that assume the infrastructure upgrades?
No.
No. So the, really, it was just the land for formula?
Yeah, it was the land, and I think what they did is they looked at the entire parcel and not necessarily the developable acreage, which, because the exact parcel, I believe, is 71 acres. I think the developable portions are what Mr. Trump, about a third? 130?
Okay, then last question is, in the contract, it provides for a due diligence period of five months, which an option to extend it by two months? So that's seven months of due diligence. During that time, is the property off the market?
Mr. Gordon, you want to answer some of these questions?
We probably need to have him come up here to the podium.
Yeah, I think we should. And Steve, just state your name and business for the record.
I'm Steve Gordon. I'm the listing agent from Signature Associates. Prior to this meeting, we went back through the approximately 45 people that have shown some level of interest prior to bringing it as Board to approve the right to negotiate, and not one of them was prepared to go forward. So, you know, but the marketing efforts will continue. So what was the question that I was answering back there?
Does the, can you accept additional offers during the due diligence period?
Yes. And the due diligence, the buyer is hoping that he can do it a lot quicker than that. If he can get it through Plymouth Township and get the correct wetland surveys, the correct quotes on the utilities. So they're trying to do, because of the market and the volatility of the market, they're trying to get this going as quickly as possible. Frankly, you know, construction started in 2018.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. Construction?
They want to start building.
Yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday.
Any other questions from the Board?
Yes, I have several. I'll just reiterate again that the market being so overheated, I feel we need to have another offer. It's unusual that you would sell something in a hot market with just one offer, but I've already said my piece on that, and you've told me why that's.
And I would love to have, I would love to have another offer for you.
I take exception with the words "buildable." The land is buildable beyond the 70 acres. You can modify the contours and create ponds and things like that. So it's really buildable at greater than 70 acres. But you just would have to engineer it. It's not, it's not a floodplain, I don't think. It's part of the, we need to look at it again, but I think it's buildable under normal circumstances. Somebody would build on that property. So we need to think about that. At 27,000 an acre is what we're getting essentially if you divide by 133. You take 3.55 divided by 133 is $27,000 an acre. And property in Northville Township for residential is selling for almost $100,000 an acre. Some places along Ridge and that area, Six Mile. And then the other is the commitment that we're making, and we have to deal with this internally. My recollection is we have never, as a township, paid for the extension of a sewer line at the expense of the Township Water and Sewer Department. So what we're doing here is potentially, I don't know what the agreement is with Watuah, probably nobody does yet. I'm not into having the ratepayers throughout Plymouth Township subsidize a developer or a development. So we need to think about that with Watuah. I don't recall, in the past, sewer lines that service a particular development are paid for by the developer to the point where they tie into the main line. So we need to think about that, what we're given. I understand we're so eager to develop this land, but it still has to have some natural momentum from the private sector to want to do it. And in the past, I don't think that the mag- And in the past, I don't think that D'Amadia Development, the sewer lines there were paid for by D'Amadia and his partners. So, and the subdivision, you know, down the road, so that's something to think about. So the points are buildable acres and the sewer line. I still think the land is probably more valuable, but that, I mean, you would have to wait. Time is what makes land more valuable. So, and I know we budgeted for this money, and that the township is not going to receive the full benefit of the sale. We'll get 650,000 or 700,000, but the county gets the remainder. But it's still a government entity. So those are my thoughts. I have some reservations, and those are more of them.
Any other questions from the board? We will entertain, just hold on, Steve, we will entertain a question here from the public. Yes, sir. Well, because the property, number one, is actually owned by, it's owned pursuant to a consent agreement. There was a lawsuit filed by Wayne County and the City of Detroit against Plymouth Township, and we attempted to acquire this property a few years ago. So we have a consent order that oversees this whole transaction. But more importantly, this parcel is one of the four main parcels comprising the old Dehoko property along Five Mile. And the four properties, or one property, the old prison itself, is owned by the Michigan Land Bank. One property is owned by Odiend, which is the old JCI. One parcel is owned by us, basically on behalf of Wayne County. And the final parcel is owned by the City of Detroit. So all entities, with the exception of Odiend, are in the process of marketing and selling these properties. And this is not only on our side, but also on the Northville side. It's part of an organization called MITC, which is the Michigan International Trade Technology Corridor. Northville Township came up with the name. And it is an effort that has been going on now for about eight years, and Plymouth, Northville, Wayne County, State of Michigan, City of Detroit, many other entities are deeply involved in marketing all of the parcels on both sides of Five Mile for economic development, which will improve our tax base and create jobs. And that's what, that's what we're all about. Yeah, I get the robocalls too, and they're all lies. So please don't believe with robocalls. Those are being perpetuated by our political opponents from two years ago. I know they are. I know you did. Everybody did. Okay. You're responding to a robocall? And our- Okay. And our questions tonight are relative to this potential sale of property, which may not even happen, because we still have to work out a deal with the potential purchaser. Any other questions?
To answer his question, if we sell this land, it will improve the township budget and indirectly lower your taxes if we don't decide to raise them anyway. But there, it has a positive effect on our balance sheet.
We don't, just to add on to what Chuck said, which is correct, we don't own this land outright today. We borrowed money a number of years ago to pay for it, and so we're paying off that note, and we're paying interest on that note as well. So when we do sell the property, we're going to get roughly 750,000 back from the county, and we're going to eliminate these interest payments that we're paying once a quarter.
Okay. Any other guests in the back? Mary? Any other questions? Any other questions from the board? Need a motion?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move that the Board of Trustees authorize the Township Attorney and Supervisor to negotiate the terms and conditions of a purchase agreement with Hillside Real Estate Investments LLC for the purchase of the Five Mile property and to submit same to the board for final consideration. This does not constitute an acceptance of the offer. The township reserves the right to act in the best interest of the township at all times and to accept or reject the final submitted purchase agreement.
Thank you. Motion's made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Next up is Item Three. This is the lawn maintenance services and turf fertilization bid consideration. Hot off the press from Building Director Mark Lewis, who is here with us tonight, the bids were posted and responded to by three responsive bidders, and the bids were just opened yesterday. So time is of the essence. Believe it or not, it's supposed to be 70 on Thursday. I'll believe it when I feel it. But we are eager to get going with this contract because our lawns are certainly going to need it. So, Mr. Lewis, tell us what you have discovered from the bidders.
Well, we, Mr. Supervisor on Board of Trustees, we received three bids for the services that we posted. Two of the bidders were from last year, and one is another local firm, Serene Landscape and True Green. An independent law services all bid. Attached is the bid sheets, the bid summary sheets, showing the results and the breakdown of costs. All bidders this time bid for a total of three years. You choose to take it for three years. If you look over at the sheet, really, they're very close to the same prices. The low bidder last year was True Green. The year before was Serene. Both of them have done very good jobs for the township. The low bidder is $200 less. And so I'm really leaving it in your hands to decide who you may wish to vote for, to do the service for us.
How does it compare with what we paid last year?
It is approximately $300. I can figure it out exactly, but it's about $350 less.
Less than last year is, the low bidder is $350 less than what Plymouth Township paid 27?
Last year, we paid True Green $14,207.
What is the address of True Green? Where's it located?
True Green is in Wixom, and Serene is in Plymouth City.
I tend to favor local businesses since they're operating in the community.
Why is there such a-
I agree with that.
Such a huge discrepancy. $14,800 versus 5385.
What?
I'm looking at totals by location. Isn't that what I'm supposed to be looking at?
Is it 13,981 versus 13,764? Then one, you're right, is way out at 24,000. More than, about double. They didn't want the work, apparently.
Oh, okay, that was the question. But was, I mean, is there something about the scope that they didn't understand, or it's just so odd?
Well, if you recall, last year, we had a large spread and we bid.
Now, last year with True Green, how did it work out? Because remember, we reduced, and we wanted to see how it worked out, we reduced the number of fertilizations from what's been going on in past years. Went from six to four? Is that what we did?
We didn't really reduce the fertilization. We reduced a lot of work done at the Friendship Station for tree trimming and pruning and stuff like that. We also reduced quite a bit of work here at Township Law. Those are some of our biggest cuts last year.
Okay, so fertilization still will be four. Is that right?
As per the bid sheet, yes.
Because the bid sheet had, looked like four lines, but they were numbered, one of them had a six next to it, but I didn't quite understand that. Let's look.
Some places like right here have more services done to them.
I'm just trying to avoid over-fertilization that ends up in the ponds, and then we end up paying money to kill the weeds in the pond.
I believe we've had great success in, actually, the last years, I think. We've looked good around here, and I think our ponds have been in good shape.
Yeah, the only, the only mistake we made last year was the growth around the pond out there on Hagerty.
Correct.
So does this contract contemplate management of that?
It does. We're going to do two cuts of that pond area instead of just one.
You mean the tall swamp weeds grew very-
They got a little wild just last year, to say the least.
So Mark, last year, we had True Green. The year before that was Serene Surroundings, correct?
Correct.
So they both understand the scope of it, so I'm confident that both of these bids are competitive.
They've done before, so they know what they're doing.
And they both did good jobs for us.
And they have both been good jobs.
So my, I'm with Chuck. My preference would be to award the service to a local company versus a non-local company.
And Serene does also do our landscaping and irrigation work along the Ann Arbor Road DDA corridor. They do a wonderful job. They're very responsive. They helped us out immensely last summer, which was dry, and also we had some construction issues along Ann Arbor Road, which they helped us out with quite a bit.
Might just have- Give me, give me an example of what we're, what they had to do specifically?
We had some construction projects along Ann Arbor Road last year where the contractors severed-
When Autozone went in, brand new, they severed the lines-
So they had to dig up the grass?
They'd dig up the grass, they had to fix meters, they had to fix the underground infrastructure, which they did. I mean, we obviously paid for it, but when things went bad and we started finding this out, then they were, they were right on the spot, and they fixed the-
There was water in the road, and they were there pretty quick.
I was just going to add that when you look at the breakdown, Serene is lower at every location or comparable to True Green except for this property. And perhaps that's because they have a better fix on the situation.
You mean the pond?
Yeah, yeah.
Perimeter of the pond?
Yeah. So that gives me a little bit more confidence, actually, that they're lower practically everywhere except here, which perhaps is because of the actual condition last year. So gives me an additional reason to want to go with them.
Now, for the attorney, we do not have a contract with anybody, so I would move, I would suggest that part of this motion be subject to approval by the Township Attorney, rather than having us have to bring this back again in two weeks, because time is of the essence. So if that's agreeable to the board, that would be my recommendation. It's a fairly simple contract.
So the next question is, are you going to go for one year or three?
Three, I believe.
There's no price escalation. They're offering the same price for three years.
Is it a flat, is it the same price for the-
It's the same price per year, and also, this contract has a way out for both parties if things are going south.
All right, do you want a motion now?
Yes.
So do we need to, okay, we need to make it subject to a contract review by the attorney?
Yes.
All right, so, okay. I move to approve Resolution 2018-4-10-21, authorizing the Township Supervisor to enter into a three-year contract after review with an approval by the attorney in the amount of, well, now we've got to do some math here.
With Serene Surroundings.
With Serene Surrounding in the amount of three times 13,981. Is that right?
I believe their proper legal name is, according to this, is Serene Landscape Group.
Oh, Serene Landscape Group. Correction. Serene Landscape Group. For 2018, 1920, landscape maintenance and turf fertilization services for the township properties as specified. So is that adequate for the attorney review?
Yes. Motion's been made by Trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up is Item G4. This is a letter of understanding with the Dispatcher Union, Lieutenant Brothers.
We're asking that the board consider entering into this letter of understanding with the PSA Dispatcher Union. This is for a correction. It's a procedural correction to the contract that was missed when we signed this a few months ago. Basically, it is how we are calling our employees in for overtime. The old language still reads that we were going to follow the equalization chart and call the person with the least amount of overtime. How it's supposed to read is that we were going to go by seniority, allowing the most senior people to be called first so that they could say yes to the overtime if they wanted to. We didn't catch this when we signed it, so our labor attorney filled out this one page, just changed a couple of quick words in it, and that's really all it is. It's just a procedural change. No benefit, no money.
No cost.
No cost. It's just how management is going to call the employees back for overtime.
And it will make employees happier? Yes. More satisfied with their work environment?
Yes. There's two or three other changes in that contract reference overtime, and a lot of the employees felt that we were stripping away a seniority right. So this was a portion that we were going to put back into it to make them happy. Yes.
Okay, any other questions from the board? From the public? From the board?
Just a curiosity question.
Sure.
What percent was the max overtime that someone achieved in 2017 in that, in that group, this sub-bargaining unit?
As far as ours, I think the max person had 68 hours of overtime.
Not a lot.
Well, in the old days, before we made these changes, the least senior employee was roughly 120 to 130 hours of overtime, and they were getting burned out, which is why we made these changes as management to basically balance it and equal it out to everybody. So, and it's working very well for us, but this, of course, is the one hiccup that we didn't catch, and of course, Murphy's Law. Somebody called in sick, and we used the old language and found out about it, so.
Heck, I remember people getting 500 hours working in a factory in a year. Wow. Or more.
That's a lot.
Work seven days a week.
I don't think anybody wants to work that much.
Okay, any other questions from the board? I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move that the Board of Trustees authorize the Supervisor and Clerk to sign the attached letter of understanding between the Charter Township of Plymouth and the Police Officers Association of Michigan, representing the Township Dispatchers/PSAs regarding assignment of overtime.
Thank you. Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second? Second by Clerk Vorva. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor- Supervisor Heizie?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kirmi?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. So we're now on to item G5. And items G5 through G9 are all going to be handled by Lieutenant Kudra, who is with us tonight. See, we give the guy a promotion, we put him to work right away. And we do get the question on this agenda. Why do we, why are we having several multiple items all pretty much dealing with the same thing, which is police equipment? And so, you know, please feel free to answer that question for us tonight. Why do we, why do we have to do separate motions for all of these things?
I was told we have to do separate motions for them all. Several of the items, we had to go out and get bids for because they were in excess of $5,000 for the expenditure. And I was told we couldn't handle, we couldn't lump them all into one motion.
Well, and I think it also has to do with where the money's coming from, too. So it's the forfeiture accounts. So we have money coming out of the federal forfeiture account. And then, Bob, if you want to just scroll down a little bit more. So we have money coming out of the federal forfeiture account, the IRS forfeiture account, and the state forfeiture account. And those are the three that we, that we deal with.
Correct.
So this, this has a lot to do with where the money's coming from so that there's proper accountability.
It's coming from drug dealers to cut to the chase.
Very good, yes. We take their money and we spend it on ourselves.
So back to the resident's comment about integrity. These five separate actions show integrity on the use of these funds.
The DOJ, I think, requires some of it.
Well, they certainly do. The Department of Justice requires it because it has not always been properly followed in the township in the past. Money was spent on non-law enforcement items and money was spent on, was spent in ways that was not properly accounted for. And it did get us in trouble, got the previous administration in trouble. So this is all part of our, our turnaround plan, our get well plan to show the feds and the state that we are properly accounting for the drug forfeiture money that we are provided.
Very good.
So let's start with item G5, the purchase of nine Wayland SenCom Sapphire control heads for the police department. I have no idea what that means.
Well, what these items are, they're the control heads that control all of the emergency equipment in the patrol cars. So they activate the lights, they activate the sirens, they activate the alley lights, which are lights that shine out of the side of the cars. They basically control all of the emergency equipment in the patrol cars. And the reason that we're replacing these is the items that are in there right now are incredibly old. They are, I said at least 18 years old because they were here when I got hired in. I spoke to Lieutenant Brothers. They were here when he got hired in 22 years ago. We had one of them fail a year or two ago. And we contacted the manufacturer to try and get replacement parts for it and they are no longer available. So we thought we would use some of these drug dealers' money and buy some new ones. As far as the installation of these items go, what we have currently is still working. Some of the buttons are not backlit in them, which makes it harder to operate them at night. They are all supposed to be backlit buttons. But we're planning on installing these in the patrol cars as we change out the fleet of patrol cars. So I'm not going to incur any kind of installation costs to put this all in in one fell swoop. We will do it as we change out the patrol cars.
I just want to say I did find this form, this document, Bob, if you might want to scroll to it, extremely helpful in basically being completed staff work. Telling us exactly why this is needed, what we will do, how it will affect services. I thought this was really terrific, so.
Answers all the anticipated questions.
Compliments.
That was the goal. Thank you.
Did you get that form out of one of the, like, quality, I don't know how they, where you guys were certified? In industry, it might be ISO certified or something, but.
I may have cut, I may have cut and pasted some stuff out of.
Well, that's good, yeah. No sense reinventing it.
Admit to nothing. Admit to nothing.
Yes, well, you know, work smarter, not harder. If there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, though.
Are you going to recycle the old equipment? In other words, make sure it gets thrown into our hazardous waste day or someplace where electrical electronic equipment is properly thrown away?
Typically, what we do is when we change it out, anything that needs to be disposed of, I let my vehicle outfitter do that and that's what he does for a living. So I would assume that he does it properly.
Yeah, they take it away.
Any other questions on this item?
I have one quick question. I hate to be nitpicky, but the bid actually came in at 5,917.95. And the resolution just says 5,917. I mean, I'll give you the dollar if that's, you know. I'd much rather be right up front.
We'll make the motion and just correct it.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on this item? From the public? No. Gary, do you want to make that motion?
Please. I move to approve resolution 2018-04-10-13, authorizing the Plymouth Township Police Department to purchase nine Wayland SenCom Sapphire control heads for an amount up to $5,917.95 out of IRS forfeiture funds.
Motion made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dempsey. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Supervisor Heizie?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kirmi?
Yes.
Motion pass.
One thing I note here, that it is designed, manufactured, and assembled in the USA. Good choice.
Name the police.
Item G6 is the purchase of 46 caliber, 45 caliber, sorry, Glock handguns. I don't think those are made in the United States. Tactical lights and Glock magazines for the police department. Lieutenant Kudra?
Yes, the department is seeking to purchase four new Glock pistols. They're Glock 21 model and four Surefire tactical lights. So those are the lights that go on the front of those handguns. That is what all of our officers carry. The reason we're looking to purchase those is currently we have one spare handgun in our inventory. We are looking to hire three officers. So we're doing interviews hopefully one week from today. If I do hire three officers, I need to be able to arm those officers. I also need to have some spare guns in inventory in case, you know, one of our officers gets into a situation where we have to hold on to that weapon as evidence or, you know, there is a malfunction of the weapon or something like that. So we have to have a spare one to give to an officer to replace the handgun that he's currently carrying, if need be. As far as the lights, again, those just go with, along with the handguns. The magazines, every officer that we have carries three magazines, one in the handgun, two on their duty belt. The magazines that we have, we have been using for quite some time. And we don't have any additional magazines that we would use for training purposes at the range. I'm seeking the new ones for the officers to carry as duty magazines. We're going to take the current crop of magazines that we have and we will make those for range for training only. And the reason we're asking for that is the springs inside the magazines that allow the rounds to feed up into the weapon system, they have a shelf life and I'm told it's about five, six years. And we're past that. In order to be able to rely on those to function properly when needed, we would need to replace those springs. Those springs are $8 a piece to replace. I believe the magazines came in. Right bid, at $21 a piece. So in addition to that, the magazines that the guys are carrying right now have been beaten up over the years on the range. They get dropped onto the asphalt surface there. They get stepped on. So it would allow us to maintain the duty magazines in a better condition.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
A question about the lights. The lights are handheld or, like it says, mounted on the pistol or the long gun?
The lights are mounted on the pistol. These are specific to our pistols. They should not come off unless the guys are cleaning the weapons.
So it allows you to see the target?
Yes.
So it's not the infrared dot?
No, no, that would be like a laser sighting system. That's, this is strictly an LED flash.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Once again, we have a dollar issue here. The sale of the Glock magazines are $21.99 and we're getting 45 of them at $21. Is there another dollar off someplace sale that I didn't see? I see we already get a sale price, but.
Is it a rounding thing?
Except it's rounding the wrong way for 45.
Well, is the total right? 47.35 or the total's not right?
Yeah, we get, well, we're getting, yeah.
It should be 75 magazines.
Should be what?
75. Three, three per person, so that's 25 officers. I don't know what number you have.
Times 21.99?
75 times 20.
I have $21 for the bid price for the.
Okay, so this is not the bid price?
Oh, that paperwork, no, I include that paperwork in there to give you a description of those. Something to look at and see the specifications. That's, that's actually not the bid.
Okay, beautiful.
All right, you made me think of something. The way we handle these bids, do they meet the letter of the requirements by the DOJ or the state of Michigan? In other words, did we do, we didn't do sealed bids. We took quotes, right?
Well, these items here, we get law enforcement pricing on, so there's no bid process.
All right, so there are no anomalies, so we won't have to come back and reapprove or have to explain with a letter?
Correct.
Good.
Okay, any other questions from the board? I need a motion?
I'll do the motion. This is way more fun than talking about fertilizer in sewers, by the way.
Lot of fertilizer spread around here.
I move to approve resolution 2018-04-10-14, authorizing the Plymouth Township Police Department to purchase four Glock 21 pistols, four Surefire tactical lights, and 75 Glock 21 magazines for a total amount of up to $4,735 out of the federal forfeiture funds.
Thank you. It's motion made by Treasurer Clinton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Kirmi. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Kirmi?
Yes.
Supervisor Heizie?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Motion pass.
Thank you. Next up is item G7, purchase of three Stalker radar units for the police department. Lieutenant Kudra?
Sounds scary.
Not scary at all. Speed enforcement. So the Stalker radar units that I'm looking to purchase, I have a fleet of 10 patrol cars. We have seven of these radar units in the patrol cars currently. Six of them were purchased in 2012. I had one that was purchased last year when one of our old radar units stopped working. So I'm looking to purchase these to basically have uniformity across the patrol car fleet. The radar units that I'm replacing, one was purchased in 1995, one was purchased in 2004, and one was purchased in 2005. Those are three, all three of those are different models of radar. So I'm looking for commonality. And these radars are actually quite superior to the ones that they're replacing. This is a state bid as well, so there's no difference in where I would go to get these and I'm ordering them directly from the manufacturer.
So these are state-of-the-art?
They are.
And if I could just call your attention to the last paragraph on this page, your budget request form. This was a learning experience for me, assuming it's true. It says that the radar signal is instantaneous. Therefore, radar and LiDAR detectors are useless.
Correct. Yeah, if your radar detector goes off, then you know we have you, so.
So if the public were to know that we had these, perhaps it actually might not speed as much, thinking that they could.
I see where you're going, but I don't.
And this just reminded me that I got a ticket in Ohio two weeks ago and I think it was due today, so.
Okay, any other questions from the board or the public?
I'd love to make this motion.
Trustee Dempsey?
Seeing as how I was frequently the slowest car on the road on a recent road trip. I move to approve resolution 2018-04-10-15, authorizing the Township Police Department to purchase three Stalker radar units for an amount up to $7,995 out of IRS forfeiture funds.
Second. Motion's been made by Trustee Dempsey, seconded by Trustee Kirmi. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heizie?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kirmi?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba? Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Did you ask me?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay. Item G8 is, well, we just bought the guns, so now we have to buy the ammo. Purchase of 45 caliber ammunition for the police department.
All right, thank you. Again, more equipment for the police department coming out of federal forfeiture funds. I'm looking to purchase 20,000 rounds of 45 caliber ammunition. And this is to more or less replenish our stockpile that we utilize for training and qualification at the range. Last year, my firearms cadre tells me that we shot approximately 16,000 rounds of ammunition, 45 caliber ammunition during our training and qualification days. This year, again, we're anticipating hiring more officers. When we hire those officers, we send them to the range and we run them through training initially and we qualify them initially when they come onboard and then they go through all of the range days with us again later on throughout the course of the year. So I'm anticipating firing more than 16,000 rounds of ammunition this year.
Okay.
Two questions. One, what range are you using?
We're using Canton Police Department's range.
That is dedicated to police only?
It is police only. Well, I can't, I don't want to say that for certain because I don't know what Canton does with it. I believe it's mostly for the police department, so I can't speak for certain on that.
Second is employee or officer hearing protection. Are you using suppression devices or should you consider it during the practice to further reduce the risk of ear damage from that many practice rounds shot in a year by a single officer? What are they shooting? 500 rounds a year? Per guy?
They're shooting quite a bit. That's probably an accurate assessment.
I would look into that, getting suppression devices for the range?
Well, we use, you know, what are commonly referred to as earmuffs.
I don't think it's adequate. With time, it's cumulative. Any hearing, it adds up?
My wife does say I don't hear very well anymore, so.
But it's something to think about. Suppression device, which is incorrect. It's called, you know, the movies call it a silencer, but suppression devices really can protect your hearing.
I could, I can certainly look into that. In order to actually attach a suppression device to the front of our handguns, we would have to get new barrels for them because you have to get threaded barrels, which we do not have. But I could certainly look into it.
Well, it's just something to think about for future planning. Maybe it's a wild idea, it doesn't make sense, but if I were shooting that many rounds, I'd be worried about my hearing.
And again, we train for realism and we, our holsters would not accommodate a silencer on the front of a handgun or a suppressor. So I could certainly run it by the range staff. I think they would tell me it's not practical, though.
Okay, any other questions from the board or the public at this time? I am looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
I move to approve resolution 2018-04-10-16, authorizing the Plymouth Township Police Department to purchase 20,000 rounds of 45 caliber ammunition for a total amount of up to $5,550 out of the federal forfeiture funds.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Kirmi?
Yes.
Supervisor Heizie?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is item G9, purchase of 10 L3 in-car video systems for the police department. Lieutenant Kudra?
Thank you. Again, we're planning on utilizing federal drug forfeiture funds to purchase these in-car video systems. The quote that I have is for complete systems, including all of the wiring, the DVRs. And we're going to go from a one-camera system to a two-camera system. One camera will be facing out the front of the vehicle. The second camera will monitor the prisoner area in the backseat of the vehicle. The video systems that we have there now, our original systems, were purchased quite some. quite some time ago, I believe it was 2002, in the month of November. Uh, all of the wiring that is in the patrol cars is original to those systems from 2002, and Level 3 is very, uh, intelligent. They make all very, L3-specific connectors, so you can't go anywhere but L3 to get the wiring for it. Um, the, uh, cameras, uh, and, uh, uh, I'm sorry, the backup batteries and the crash sensors in the vehicles, crash sensors and backup batteries, that is a, a system that if the vehicle's involved in a collision, uh, the crash sensors will detect that, and even if the car battery, uh, is disabled in the crash, there's a backup battery that will power that camera system. And the way that our cameras work is, uh, when they're activated, they, they're constantly recording on, I think it's a 20 or 30-second loop, so, uh, if that backup battery is in place, it will kick on and start recording, uh, and we will hopefully have that crash captured on video. Um, those, uh, batteries, uh, and crash sensors were purchased back in December of 2007, uh, so those are 11 years old and past their useful, uh, lifetime. Um, and then the, uh, current videos and DVR recorders were purchased back in December of 2011. Uh, the ones that we're looking to purchase here are all HD video. Uh, again, it's an upgrade, because we're going to the two, uh, cameras as opposed to the one. Um, and, uh, these will need to be installed in the patrol cars. Um, I have spoken to my vehicle upfitter. Uh, three of my patrol cars, as, as we know, we ordered them at a prior board meeting, uh, those will be installed in the cost to outfit those cars, so there's no additional cost incurred there. Uh, my upfitter tells me, uh, could be up to $450, uh, for those additional seven units per car, uh, to install these. And the reason he tells me up to is because he did not build any of those seven cars. He's not exactly sure how the wiring is run, and, uh, you basically have to take the whole interior of the car out, uh, to run all the wiring for these systems to install them.
So how do we get that approved? Is it in here already?
Uh, that money will be, for the install, will be paid out of our vehicle maintenance, uh, funds. I don't believe that we can use the federal forfeiture funds.
You're sure, for an installation?
I have, have been told that you can't use the federal funds for the install, just for the equipment purchase itself.
There's a question, uh, I have a question on the, the last page of the write-up background completed staff work. Uh, it says, "In 2017, the township spent 15,000 to upgrade the antennas that receive the digital media from the patrol vehicles at the police station, and purchased a seven terabyte server to store the digital media, media files." Is this being broadcast real-time from the field?
No. The, the, uh, data is captured by the video system, it's stored in the DVR on the patrol car. There are antennas mounted on the patrol car, which, when we come to the station, they sync up with the antennas, uh, that are mounted, uh, on the back building, back of the building where we park our patrol cars, and then the data is automatically downloaded up to those antennas and down into our server.
So it's downloaded wirelessly?
Correct.
In the parking lot?
Correct.
And just, you, you mentioned HD. We were encouraged by the Citizens Council not to use acronyms.
High, high definition.
High definition, thank you.
We call that the Bondi Rule. Any other questions from the board or the public? Okay, need a motion?
Ready.
Uh, is that, Mr. Kermey?
Yeah. I move to approve Resolution 2018-04-10-17 authorizing the Plymouth Township Police Department to purchase ten L3 in-car video systems for any amount up to $48,565 and zero cents out of federal drug forfeiture funds.
Motion's made by Trustee Kermey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. And, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Kermey.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Hyman.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Lieutenant Kudra.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good job.
One thing to note is, these, uh, new capital items requests, it should be a best practice in the township. Others should use it. Copy it. Copy shamelessly.
I did like that.
Okay. Okay, sure. We'll, uh, have a, about a five-minute recess at this point.
Yeah.
So you're not, we're not going to do the appointments? Okay, we're, uh, back on the record with Item G 12. This is the, uh, draft Park Para-Concession Agreement term sheet for discussion only tonight. Uh, the agenda item is one of the three documents which are being requested, uh, for our consideration. Uh, this is the so-called term sheet document that would, uh, further flesh out the, uh, relationship between the township, the city, Park, and Para, which would be the actual authority. And, um, I just, uh, I've met with Mr. Sunin, who is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have. I've met with Mr. Sunin and Mr. Malcolm last week. Uh, I've also, uh, by way of another email, provided you with a copy of the, an actual copy of the state statute, which is the enabling legislation for a, um, uh, public recreation, uh, recreational authority under state law. I've reviewed that law also with, uh, Kevin Bennett. You know, I'll just tell you, from my persp, from a, just a lawyer perspective, it's a pretty, it's a pretty straightforward statute. I don't think there's any, um, there's not a whole lot of ambiguity to it in terms of how, what you have to do to set up one of these, uh, authorities and how it's, um, managed and maintained. Um, I am meeting next week with Oliver Woolcott from the city, so that we can, uh, discuss some of the other relationship issues between the township and the city that are part of this agreement. Um, I've gone through the, uh, the concession agreement, the so-called term sheet. I got a lot of my questions answered by, uh, Mr. Sunin, and, uh, obviously, we're going to have to work out the, uh, number of, the membership of the committee of the authority itself. Whether that's five and two, or four and three, is still subject to, uh, discussion. Um, I had an issue with item, one of the bullet points, one of the bullet points here dealing with the, uh, the president of Park and Malcolm shall be invited to participate in Para Board meetings. I struck all that. Um, any public meeting is going to be open to the public, it's going to comply with the Open Meetings Act, and certainly, anybody would be invited to attend and participate. So I don't think we have to single out any, anybody in particular to, uh, to extend to them some kind of, of open invitation. Uh, it also talks again about the Para Board, um, consistent with state law, being able to levy a tax of up to not more than one mil for a period of 20 years. Um, the law itself lays out all of the different items that can be, uh, paid for by this, uh, by this authority, all the different types of, of recreational, um, entities, you know, buildings, parks, green space, you name it. Um, the Para Board will need to determine the amount of the millage and the duration of the millage as specified in the ballot proposal. That's fine, again, that's consistent with state law. We are again looking at a, uh, November general election date, and, uh, obviously, would have to be approved by both the city and township residents. If it fails in one community, it, it fails completely.
I would like written in here somehow, so that if it, if the millage fails, this authority is dissolved. I don't want this to morph into a recreational, uh, authority for things, parks and swimming pools and things like that between us and the city of Plymouth without, just automatically happening. We need to have, uh, something, a check valve to get it diverted and, and dissolved. I want, I would want it to dissolve if it loses. But those are, that's one thing to, I don't know how you get that in there legally, but I think it's important that it not have a life of its own, and that we have to actually take action to end this authority at some other date.
Yeah, I think if the, I think we can put that into the, I'm sort of looking at Kevin, too. The authority-enabling document, which would be executed between the city and the township, I believe we would have the legal right to put a clause like that in there, that should the millage fail at the November 2018 election, that the city and the township would both, um, uh, agree to dissolve the authority before the end of this calendar year, and that anyone appointed to that authority would be, um, would be, uh, out, obviously. Nolan Boyd, thank you.
The creation of the authority is done by way of filing articles, articles of incorporation, and the articles of incorporation could include a provision that states if the millage didn't pass in both communities, that the authority is dissolved.
I mean, without action from either the Plymouth City Commission and the Township Board. I want it to be automatic, not that we would have to vote on it.
Yeah, that's right. I, I, I think that we can do that if, uh, if it's drafted artfully, the articles.
Well, certainly, that would be our preference. If we, if it could be an automatic dissolution, but if we do need to take an affirmative step, because these documents are filed with the Secretary of State. Once the authority is created, it goes to the Secretary of State, they file the, the Articles of Incorporation, just as if it were a, or the, the authority creation documents, just as they would for a private corporation.
So, uh, the what-if will be, if the PARC wanted to try it again, you'd have to start all over again and create another authority.
Right.
So it provides a barrier to do that versus, like, the old days of the school district, where they would come back every 90 days.
Okay, so that was something that, uh, I think we're all supportive of. Um, let's see, I had some questions, uh, they've been answered, but, um, as far as in the term sheet, there's references to some other entities, one, and, and, Don, this is for you, one...
Can it go up there on the...
Oh, oh, sure, sorry. So further down in the term sheet, uh, right there in the, in the, the parties, you know, it's a lot of parties there. So we're talking also about the Community Foundation Investments LLC, and their, that their acronym, CFI, comes up a few times, and then, of course, Mr. Mark Malcolm. Um, so, Don, could you just explain again for us what, what are those two entities, and, and what would be their role in, um, furthering this, uh, agreement?
Uh, the Malcoms have donated property to a, essentially a donor-advised fund, and once they donate that property, which they've already done, it can't be used for anything other than charitable purposes. They cannot, if the, if the millage failed and everything failed, and the whole thing came crashing down, that property, uh, if it were subsequently sold, would have to go to a charitable organization. It could not go to the Malcoms. And so they have donated that to make certain that there is no indication that they could ever, under any circumstance, ever benefit financially from this transaction, whether it wins or loses. So then, uh, it would, it will get donated to the authority. Uh, if the millage passes, it's already as established, it would get, uh, donated to that. If that never happens, it'll go to some other charity.
So let's have some clarification on that. Let's say, for example, they put 3 million into a charitable trust, or whatever legal entity this was, and they get the property back, and they sell it for 15 million, they get to keep the 15 minus 3 as a profit.
No, they keep nothing.
The whole 15 million then would be taken as a...
15 million...
As a tax deduction.
Uh, to charity. They have...
As a charitable donation.
No, they have the tax deduction based on the value of the property, which they have already donated to the donor-advised fund, which is part of the Community Foundation of Southeastern Michigan. It's a big organization, big nonprofit. They have donated their property to that organization. If it's sold for $15 million later, that value would go to the donor-advised fund, which then would be distributed to charities over time. So they have no chance of ever having any financial gain, any way, shape, or form from this property, whether it goes forward or not.
So the appreciation, if it happened, in the property, and the charitable donation achieved by that, uh, appreciation, they would not get to claim that on their income tax?
They already have claimed it based on the value at the time they donate.
At the time, but now it's, let's say, it's five years later, and it's up here.
It's no longer their benefit, and it's no longer under their control. Very generous.
Yeah.
If the millage fails and the Malcoms, uh, pull out of Park, uh, if the authority is then dissolved, uh, the Malcoms' plan then is to do what, to your knowledge?
The, I can't speak, uh, specifically to what level of control. They do not own, will not own the property. Right now, the school district still technically owns the property until the last payment is made. But that la, last payment will be made. They have donated their rights to that property to the charity, to the, uh, Community Foundation of Southeastern Michigan. That last $50,000, which is owed on the, on the option, would be paid by that organization. They take control of the property at that point. What is done with the property by that organization, I really can't speak to. Now, I don't know that that's meant a term.
Which organization? Community Foundation?
Community Foundation of Southeastern Michigan.
Where's their headquarters?
Um...
Detroit.
I'm not sure. Maybe Southfield? I'm not sure, I can't speak to that. I do know I, I've, uh, I have visitor offices in Detroit, whether they're headquartered in Detroit, I'm not sure.
Now, the millage, uh, by state law, cannot be for more than 20 years. What would be your plan for bonding for the, uh, new facilities?
It would be probably for 20 years.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't have to be. If it's a shorter term, then they, uh, you know, the payments on the bond issue would be higher, but really, I guess that would be up to the authority, which will be, you know, formed under, uh, the township and the city, directed by them. If they wanted to go for a shorter term, that would be fine, but my guess would be it'd be 20 years.
So, because further on, on page two, towards the bottom of page two, uh, under conveyance of Park property, uh, right stop, um, third circle, Para will enter into a concession agreement with Park for the exclusive operation and management of the Park property as described below. Now, when we met, we had talked, is there going to be, I assume that there will be a term of years?
Yes.
For that agreement, and what, what would you suggest for that?
The, uh, statute allows up to 35 years. We have suggested the 35 years, but certainly, we're, uh, we're agreeable, though a shorter term, if, uh, someone were more comfortable with that.
Now, you're going to continue to do fundraising for these projects. What if you're funding, what if, uh, a big donor comes along and says, "I'll give you $5 million if I can get my name on that theater"? Uh, what, what would happen to the, what would happen to the overage that would have been generated by, by the millage?
We can certainly discuss that if we have a $5 million donor after the fact. If someone wants, if we have all the funding and the project is underway, and somebody wants to give us $7 million to put their name on that theater, we can certainly talk about that. You can put whatever language you like in there, but I think that is highly unlikely once the project is entirely funded, but we can certainly talk about that. We would like to have some opportunity to do some fundraising on an ongoing basis, uh, on a much smaller scale. We do have rooms, we got, we'll be selling seats in the theater. We'd like to be able to do that on a continuing basis, but if there were a large, major contribution, multimillion-dollar contributions, we could certainly look at, we don't need it to operate. Frankly, we wouldn't know what, we couldn't do anything with it, so we can certainly discuss how we might handle that.
But, but it says that the company would retain naming rights to the Park property, and may sell each naming rights and, and retain the revenue, so it wouldn't go to the authority.
Well, if someone wanted to donate $100,000, $50,000 to create an art exhibition room or something unique, we'd like to have the flexibility to be able to do that within some reason, but I'm not thinking in terms of multimillion-dollar contributions. But I'm not thinking in terms of multimillion-dollar contributions. We can modify the language in that to deal with that. But we're going to be selling seats, we'll be selling bricks, we'll be selling, naming rights to rooms and things like that, and we really would like to have a flexibility to be able to do that. That will certainly be diminished after this project is completed anyway, so I think it wouldn't be all that much of it, as these things typically go.
But if you sell bricks, then what happens to that revenue? Is that used to?
That would go to Park, as a nonprofit, we'll be doing fundraisers as time goes on, to supplement our operations, and that's where that would go, into our general fund.
So, is Park going to get revenue generated by the millage? Does any of that go to Park?
None.
It goes to what?
Not one dollar. It goes to the authority to build the theater and to renovate the facility, the school facility, and the infrastructure on the site. About fourteen million on the theater, about seventy-eight million for infrastructure, and about seventy-eight million to renovate the current building.
So, there's a clear delineation, then, the millage would be used for construction purposes only?
Only.
And then, Park would be responsible for the ongoing operations and all the expenses?
Yep.
Don, the question I keep getting from people, and the big concern is, nobody goes into an agreement with the thought that it will fail. But what is the exit strategy for Park? What if it does fail? What if the performing arts theater is built and nobody comes? I mean, you know, what do we do? Because all of a sudden, those expenses are going to roll up and roll up and roll up, and the revenue doesn't come in.
The, obviously, if it were to fail, the authority would take over full responsibility. They could secure another concession area to operate the facility. They could develop the property, and anything in between. You know, I guess that's always a possibility, but this situation is pretty unique in that not only do we have the usual amenities, you know, swimming pools, gymnasiums, football fields, and the like, but if you see our business plan, a major portion of the revenue comes from tenants that reside in that facility. That's why this project works when others do not. The outside business case that was done by a professional firm was very, very optimistic, even more optimistic than I would be. And I just, it's hard for me to imagine, even with an economic downturn and everything else, that that project would really struggle. But, you know, anything is possible, and we need to address that. But it would go back to the authority, and the authority would have total control over what would happen to that site.
So, would you be opposed to embedding in the concession agreement the exit strategy?
No, not at all. Essentially, it's there. It does say it resorts back to the authority. So, the exit strategy would be whatever the authority, which would have your representatives on it, and city representatives would decide what they would do with it. But I would really, if there are serious questions about the viability of the project, let's make sure we get that behind us. I'll be more than happy to sit down with each and every one of you, or collectively, and demonstrate why we are as confident as we are. Those of us involved with the project are putting substantial funds into this project, and I'd like to think we know a little bit about what we're doing, and we would not be doing this. If I had any doubt that this was not going to be successful, I would not be making the contributions I am, nor with the Malcoms.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And like I said, nobody ever goes into agreement with the understanding that it will fail. But, you know, twenty years from now, who knows what technology brings, who knows what the future brings? So, I think we're not looking at necessarily what's going to take place in the next three or five years, but this is going to be part of the community for years to come.
Let me just make one more comment on it. Those of us that are making substantial private contributions to this project really do have the means to get it past a hard spot in the economy, or whatever the case may be, I'll tell you what, it's going to have to be a very, very deep one for those of us involved with this project to bail out. And I think we'll see to it, through management technique, through funding, whatever. I'm not promising anything, but I got to tell you, we put our heart and soul into this thing, and we do have the means to keep it going, if that's what it comes to during a difficult time. So, that's going to have to go a long way down before we got to consider any abandonment.
What about a requirement that Park maintain a certain level of reserves that would, you know, I don't know, whatever the right number would be, you know, two years, maybe that's a lot, but a certain period of time of operating cash flow, so that there's always a reserve, so that it doesn't come back onto the township and the city? Because that's probably a principal concern, is what happens if the bills can't be paid? You know, who has to cover it?
Well, certainly, our board of directors is going to be trying to build that reserve as quickly as we can, and it's another reason why I want to be able to, we were talking earlier about some naming rights and doing some of that, we want to build that reserve, and that's a mechanism by which we can do that. So, I don't want to be handcuffed in doing that, and we're certainly going to do everything we can to build as much reserve as we can, within what the 501(c)(3) we're operating and will allow. So, that's certainly our goal, to build that reserve. Now, we're probably not going to start out on day one with that reserve in Park, but we're going to be building towards it as quickly as we can.
And would it behoove the authority, once it's created, and let's say the millage passes and everything? They would work out with Park, a, an agreement, a term sheet, if you will, that would contain, I would think it would have to contain certain measurables, right?
Absolutely.
And that if Park does not achieve those measurables, I mean, Mike, does not achieve those measurables, then you would be subject to termination, that the contract could be terminated. I mean, right now, I think that you have demonstrated a business plan for this project. You've shown us a few years of operation. You're apparently running a profit. You're making money at Park the way it is right now. But again, to echo Mark's concerns, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, we're not going to be here. And, you know, I don't want Park to be taken over by people who maybe have great intentions, but may have no business sense, and may have no sense of how to operate these types of facilities. And so, we've got to have, the authority needs to have a mechanism in place to end the relationship if you're not delivering, if Park is not delivering.
Well, I think what we propose is that it needs to be used for arts, education, and recreation, and serve the community. And certainly, we need to be self-sufficient. We need to give you quarterly financial reports. You will know, because we're a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3), you will know everything we do. As we file our Form 990s every year, you'll know everything about the place. As a nonprofit, as a 501(c)(3), we're as transparent as you could possibly be. So, everyone will know what's going on, and I think there's some comfort in that. Now, you know, anytime we get into these kinds of endeavors, when you try to anticipate, what, fifteen, twenty years from now might hold, I guess it's a little difficult. I mean, we've done something similar with the library. What's going to happen with the library twenty years from now, if we get a running board in at the library or something? I think there's a lot more control here, far more control here, particularly if you go with appointed directors into this authority, as opposed to elected directors, and I would recommend that. Personally, I feel more comfortable if the township and the city were appointing their directors to this authority and not have them elected. Now, we can go either way, or even a mix.
This board, I think a lot of people have expressed they want the opposite. They want to wash the hands and say, "It's an authority, it's not my problem," twenty years from now.
We're either in, or we're out here on this thing in control. If you really want to maintain control over the longer term, then the more, you're going to get more control with an appointed board. With an elected board, you know, we're not sure. We don't know what that might be.
To me, the elected board would be comparable, the appointed board, sorry, would be comparable to the Downtown Development Authority.
Yes.
Where we would, where we would be able to, even the state law provides that these members can be removed for cause in a public hearing. We do have that same ability with members of the DDA right now, and all of our other ZVA, Planning Commission. I think that gives us a great deal of control, oversight, call it what you will, that you would not have if it were an elected body. I'm just throwing that out there.
That may be true, but you also have the risk that an elected board could be hostile towards Park, and therefore appoints people that are going to be hostile, not be friendly. Let's say, for example, that an administration was put in place, maybe some people you know, and they were openly hostile. They appoint a board that shuts down Park.
Obviously, there's a downside to each, and there's a benefit going each way. If the township, the governing bodies want to maintain more control, obviously, the appointed board would be the way to go. If you want to stay away from it and just let the public be elected to those positions, I mean, there's an argument for that, too. We can live with it either way, you know, but my gut tells me, I'd rather go with the devil I know, I guess, than take the chance. But that's really up to all of you, and we can go with either way.
The other option, which I think the state law doesn't really specifically provide for, but would be an appointed board that would then transition into an elected board over time. I also like that, if I'm going to have an elected board, which I'm, I've been on both sides, I've argued, I've argued both sides of this issue already, but if we're going to have an elected board, I would rather have that happen over time, once the heavy lifting phase is over with.
Yeah, initially, they have to be appointed in the first round, and then you could take one, two, or three, roll them out over parts of election cycles, and move into an all-elected board, or you could have a mix. You could have some appointed and some elected, too.
I'm not sure about that, but I'll.
Yeah, that would be a little wild.
Yeah, I'm not sure the law really provides for that, and I might be wrong. I've never seen that.
Our attorney had indicated that we could, it could be, but.
All right, here's another what-if. If you have a large expense for building, maintenance, or repair, ten years down the road, how will that be paid?
That would, let's say we got a completely redude to the roof, and it's a two-million-dollar build, that we would need to build some reserve at the authority level for major repairs like that, because we've got certain systems that will probably need to be replaced after five, ten, twenty years. And there needs to be, and there will be, there's some room in the millage of what we're talking about, to build that reserve. Normal routine maintenance would be the responsibility of Park, but if we've got a major structural issue that needs to be addressed, and that needs to, as a landlord, the authority as a landlord, would need to address.
So, you're calculating that and building it into the millage rate request?
Yeah, over time, we'll build that reserve, because over time, at the, if we have a fixed millage, let's say it's the point seven-five we've been talking about, over time, as property values increase and the like, you're going to build a reserve at that level. And it'll be up to the authority to figure out, you know, at what level they want to maintain that reserve, and at what point do they want to start reducing it. But yeah, there's room in there to build that reserve.
Kevin, this millage is subject to Headley, correct?
Yes, everything is.
So, that will decrease the millage with time, if property values increase?
Well, we should still, as I understand it, we should still be rebuilding additional tax revenue over time that would support the revenue that we would generate versus what we need to service the bond.
It is subject to Headley, because Headley was enacted before the Recreational Authorities Act, so Headley would control.
Yeah, nineteen seventy-eight was Headley, but I'm trying to understand how, how do you ensure that you have enough revenue from the millage to service the bonds with Headley, and have some reserve for unforeseen, or you know eventually, of course, it may be different than the library, most normal people build roofs that last between thirty and fifty years, not ten or twenty, but, so, you're still going to have some of that failure that you'll have to really anticipate twenty years ahead of time?
Well, we need to.
I'm trying to understand the mechanism, and I'm not smart enough to understand it.
But here, seven, or three-quarters of a mill will serve as a twenty-five-million-dollar bond issue. Right now, we need twenty-four. We would start out with a million dollars in that reserve, and then we build on that over time.
Well, don't use this building as an example, because we didn't set aside any money for maintenance here. The employees, so let's say the theater is built. You're going to have stagehands, you're going to have guys and gals working the lights, taking the tickets, cleaning up. Are these all, are these employees, employees of Park or the authority?
No, no, they're employees of Park. And certainly, they will fit in and be shared with the current operation. The maintenance folks that maintain the current building are going to maintain a new building, shouldn't take much maintenance. The executive director we have today will be responsible. It's another facility added to the current facility. We will extend a few hours on the marketing personnel, ticket personnel are paid for by a two-dollar fee on tickets, that's how funded. We need some custodial help. But the same staff will be servicing the new theater and the old building, and there's a huge amount of efficiency in doing that. It's all on the same side.
Canton Township right now, the Cherry Hill Theater, those are all Township employees.
All Township employees, and let me tell you, the biggest problem they have is having it operated by Township employees. The pay scales, the benefits, the retirements, the healthcare, as a nonprofit, we don't have to deal with those issues. And you compare salaries in nonprofit organizations to government organizations, it's dramatic. I wouldn't touch this thing if it weren't a 501(c)(3). I mean, that's a huge burden. You look at Lebonia, look at Canton, look at any of the other facilities around government, run by government agencies, that's a difficult slug. Look at the detail, the cost to operate those facilities. I mean, I've been through every line item on every one of those organizations, and, you know, our costs, operating costs are fractions. One of the things is our model is different, too. The current school, we don't run programs at Park. We rent space to people that run programs at Park. All these other places hire all the staff, they got the Zumba instructors, they got swim instructors, they've got god knows what, and they're on the staff. If you rent space to the organizations that come in, our staff is very minimal. You can kind of get the key players on one hand, and that's a key to this. You cannot get into running these programs. Sometimes, we don't offer necessarily everything that everybody would want, but we've got a pretty good cross-section of it now, and, you know, you've got to be careful who you bring in, maybe not, but it works that way. And then you have the tenants. We've got twenty-eight tenants now. We're about eighty-five, ninety percent occupied, they pay rent every month, and we don't, the combination of not running programs and having tenants that are paying your rent every month makes this model work.
How many tenants have you evicted for non-payment of rent?
What's that?
How many tenants have you evicted for non-payment of rent?
Not one. We had one tenant left after two years, he said, "I'm just working too hard for what I'm getting," but she never missed a payment of rent. Not one.
Don, the other question I hear from people is, how confident are you in the estimate of what it's going to take to enhance that building? And, I mean, the scenario is, you start opening up the roof, and there's asbestos and lead everywhere. Have you done an inspection in enough detail to feel comfortable with that?
Yes, we have, and we've done a couple of them. Certainly, on the asbestos side, we know what we've got. We're fortunate, and that schools about twenty-five, eight years ago, had to remove most of the asbestos from their buildings, so we don't have to deal a lot, a little bit, but we know what it is. The building, we've had contractors in here, we got quotes on virtually everything of any significance, from heating, air conditioning, windows, renovation. We've got quotes on that stuff already, and we're very comfortable on the renovation. Now, we're talking seven, eight million dollars, we're not talking chump change here. The other thing is, our tenants, as nonprofits, arts organizations, recreation organizations, are not nearly as demanding on renovations and the cosmetics as it would be if we were building law offices, or accounting offices, or the like. Most of them are happy the way it is, and the less we do to the place, the better. So, we're not up against a situation where we really have to enhance that facility cosmetically in order for our tenants to be satisfied. In fact, with heating and air conditioning systems, we're going to keep the old boiler system, because it's solid, for heating systems, and we're running window air conditioners. We're not putting in central air conditioning. Everybody's happy with it now, there's no need to change it. And we're finding, as we did studies at Cranbrook, just did a major renovation on a building very similar to this. That's what they did. They kept the old heating system, went to window air conditioners, and it's a fraction of the cost to have them get that place and put in all new systems. So, we have been down that road, and I think we've got a good handle on it. Certainly, Ted Shaw's on our board, or Ted Barker with Shaw Construction, he's a contractor, he's, you know, been through this thing, top to bottom, we've had all the contractors, subcontractors in. I think we've got a good handle on that.
Do you plan any significant demolition of Central Middle School?
None. We won't do any demolition. We won't do any demolition, we want to keep all the space we have. Originally, that was the plan, as we got more into it, that, that building is so solid, and it would make no sense to do it. Originally, we wanted to demo the pool, we've just put a major upgrade, our grant money into the pool, it's in really good shape. The gymnasium was going to come down, we wouldn't tear down that gymnasium, there's no need to demo anything on that site.
Plymouth Canton still maintains that maintenance building adjacent to Park, is that still?
The warehouse.
The warehouse, the warehouse building, Plymouth Canton?
That, that, no, we've taken that over entirely, that's 100% rented and occupied, the warehouse.
The art lady is in there, right?
What's that?
The art lady is in there?
She's the one that left. Tony Rocco's in the warehouse, Forever After Productions is there, the clay pot, the...
Her storage?
No, they build sets in one part, Tony Rocco's in there doing his art gallery in there, we've got, we've got pottery classes in there, got some artists in one wing, it's 100% occupied.
What about the church?
Uh, I don't know. I mean, at one time...
Is that still privately owned, or is that considered?
Yeah, it's privately owned.
Part of the footprint of Park?
Well, not really, I mean, it's in that corner, it's up front.
Yeah, it's there.
Something could be worked out over time, it might be attractive, but there's nothing underway at this point.
So the deed to that property is with the church?
That church owns that property. That might be nice, but originally, originally, the plan was that's where the gym and the pool would go on that end, now that we've changed that, it's really not of all that much interest to us.
I have a question on liability insurance. The final circular bullet point on page three says that the company, which is Park, will maintain general liability and property insurance for the Park property. So, you're talking about this current Central Middle School and the theater?
Yes.
So, you know, as you know, we have, there's really only two providers of municipal liability insurance in Michigan, the MMRMA, which is, which we have, and the MML, which I believe the city has. It would be then your intention to name the authority?
Yes.
And, I'm looking more at Kevin, would they, would they also name the city and the township as additional insured, or how would that work?
I would hope so.
Yeah?
I can't answer that question, I guess it's never been posed, whether the city and township, but certainly the authority is, but, you know, we can talk about that.
Are you saying they could not seek insurance from one of the other consortiums or private companies?
Well, I think Park can do that as a 501, but if the authority, the authority would really be limited, not exclusively, but, but the MMRMA and the MML are really the only two, they're, they're the big guys. Now, there are some municipalities that are self-insured, Dearborn is self-insured, there are some municipalities whose insurance ratings are so bad, they have to go to Lloyds of London or a, or a private carrier.
What is that broker, Burnham and Flower, are they a broker for liability or for something else?
Uh, I think they are more of an employment-related.
They're a broker, I believe, for like, some of our retirement systems, and, yeah.
I mean, currently, you know, Park is insured by, I think Philadelphia, if I recall, and, and the school district is named as an also insured. Now, I, I'm not sure how this is different, we can talk about that, but we carry all the insurance with the school district covered, because they own, technically own the facilities that are...
You know, my objective would just be the authority, I don't want the authority to have employees, you know, any, any of that traditional local government overhead, you know, I want that to be shifted to Park or whoever's going to be running the site.
I can't imagine they'd need any employees, I don't know what they'd be doing.
Well, good.
All right, I, I mean, the really purpose of this, you may have some volunteers, appointed ones that are volunteered, are getting $20 a meeting or something, but, you know, they meet once a quarter or once a year, all they do is collecting the tax revenue and paying the bondholders, and, yeah, you've got to annually form your financial statements, but there's very, very little transactions.
And similarly, you do not want the, the authority micromanaging how Park provides their services. We don't want to get into whether or not the dancers are going to have dust on the floor or something like that. We, we have those discussions here.
We're, Park has taken over total responsibility for profit and loss of that operation. We have to have maximum flexibility in how we do that, as long as we stay within the parameters of what we are obligated to do. We can't have other organizations or individuals nickel and diming what we're offering, when, and what they pay, and things like that, because we have to run that business as a business, as a nonprofit business, and we've got to make ends meet. So we do need some flexibility in that.
Imagine having a guy like me telling you what to do, right?
Yeah.
The tax collection will be done by each of the municipalities, correct? The treasurer here and the, the city treasurer, right?
We have an administrative fee to cover.
Yeah.
I assume it's another light item like the library on the tax bill.
All right, same, so, routine.
One, one quick question, or one statement at least, is, just please know, as we hammer out the details of the term sheet in the next three or four meetings, or two or three meetings, nobody ever questions your business sense, your ability to do this? I'm getting questions, I mean, what if the plague hits the building? I mean, I'm getting all kinds of stuff. So that's the kind of questions we're going to be bringing up, and just making sure that, you know, we're covered and...
That's fine, we will answer them to the best of our ability.
Thank you.
People are questioning his business sense daily.
They may, they may question my sanity, but...
Any other questions from the board at this time? My plan is to start getting in front of you, the, I'm going to talk to the mayor, and then we'll start going, fine tuning the articles of incorporation, and I'll, I'll get that document back to you for further review and discussion and possible action.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public at this time on this item?
Mary Wydell, Plymouth Township resident. I think there's one thing we need to define for the future on this, is when, when are the operating costs, when they go in the negative, what is the trigger point to where operations should cease?
How big the pain has to be.
Yes.
I said how big the pain has to be.
Yeah. Also, what happens in 20 years when the bond, or when the millage is up, and the major utilities need replacing? Air conditioning, furnace, roof, parking lots, windows, carpet, paint, it's all, a lot more to look forward to, even, even on our houses, you know these expenses are quite costly, but on big buildings such as what's being proposed, it's something that you easily put it under. Another question I'm, I'm struggling with is, why are taxpayers going to subsidize businesses that normally we do not have to help out to lower their rent costs? There are many arts businesses, exercise businesses, gyms, dance studios in our area that operate on their own, in their own buildings, or renting other buildings, and how is this fair to them that we're subsidizing the ones that get into Park, but they don't get any tax benefit from this millage? And how is it fair to the Township residents to pay thousands for this project to help develop a rental complex with tenants and not really a community center?
Okay, one timeout, is this being recorded okay, or do we need to have the microphone closer to her face? You think, Sandy, I don't, I don't know how you tell if it's being recorded, because I think some of this is difficult to pick up, so that people can hear it either at home or on a, on a recording.
Although it would be nice if you were speaking to the... This one? Okay, this one says green is on. I know what it says, but this one doesn't. So, one of the things I was thinking about when listening is, part of this millage going to reserves. Then, if it is, the project really isn't self-sufficient, as it will rely on taxes for its future Also, at the beginning, a statement was made tonight that the millage was for construction only, so this is a little confusing when saying we're putting it into, we're putting some of the millage funding into reserves, but we're also saying it's only for construction. What is it? And also, I think there is a significant amount of risk in this project to create a business center for renting out and the theater, especially for Plymouth City and Plymouth Township number of residents, which is half of what Canton Township has, and they can't even fill a theater half the size that we are proposing here. And to remind from the last meeting, they are losing half a million dollars a year on their, on their theater.
Well, you heard why, right, obviously? Municipal employees running something as opposed to...
But it's also the demand. There is very few shows there, so how are, how is a business plan going to prove itself for this theater when it can't prove much for that theater? And, and when we're offering new competition in possibly an already saturated market that can't be filled at this point, it's, it's a risk. It's a risk that normally a township or a government doesn't go into is entertainment businesses, and renting out, you know, renting out structure, renting out rooms, renting out space. And it's not, it's not a small amount of money. On my house, over 20 years, I will be paying over $3,000 for this, for this project.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on this particular item? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Sunin and board members, we will move on to the rest of the agenda then. Next up, oh darn, I don't have my page here, next up, I believe, is Supervisor and Trustee comments, okay. I don't have a whole lot tonight, as you know, my mother passed away last week, and I do appreciate all the thoughts and comments and prayers from my, my colleagues up here at the board, and also our, our employees here at Township Hall, greatly appreciate it. That's all I have. Bob?
Bob, nothing here, thanks.
Carrie?
Just quick, great job to the lieutenants for laying out everything and putting things in the right buckets, and you guys did a wonderful job, this made it very, very easy to go through and look at everything, thank you.
Jerry Vorba?
I'm good.
Okay, Mark?
I'm good as well.
Jack?
I have two things. One, I was not here at the last meeting, and so I was not, I didn't participate, obviously, in the vote on the proposed resolution of the pension dispute with the city, and I did watch the video, and Mr. Supervisor, you indicated that we'd had communications about that.
Oh, you and I?
Yes, you and I, and you said you didn't feel at liberty to talk about those, which I respect, I would have felt fine if you had mentioned it. So I will say that what I had said, and if you want to verify it, it's fine with me, that I would have, I, I did go, I did favor the recommendation to resolve it as per the ultimate decision by the board, so I would have intended to vote for it had I been here. So I want to go on record, so everybody knows that that's where I came down on that, and I hope it is resolved. Second thing is, just to express again disappointment over the last few weeks of more outages in the township with DTE, and so, again...
At your house?
At my house, and obviously at other places in at least the west end of the township, so I'm distressed again that things that DTE said would fix problems apparently haven't completely fixed our situation. I hope that in a few weeks or months, we can have them back in, and they can explain where things stand, because it doesn't seem like they've fixed the problem completely.
Okay. Chuck?
I didn't completely, I didn't completely hear the legacy cost with the city, you can't comment right now, there's a, there must be a next step, or?
The city commission is meeting, the city commission is going to meet next Monday, they did not have a, you know, as you recall, when we, when we made our counter offer to the city, that was right on the eve of the Easter break. They had a meeting that Monday night, which there were several members of their commission missing, they were on vacation.
It was April 2nd.
April 2nd, and these are also people who are, you know, key votes, I'll leave it at that. So they are going to meet Monday, and we are hoping for a positive outcome.
All right. Since we're talking about lawns, are you guys going to make a run at having everything but the park quoted out to see where, if we can get it done privately?
We're looking at it.
Or is it too late?
Now, I don't know if it's too, it's almost too late, but we're looking at, at that with Cindy Kushner and Mark Lewis, to some extent, the DPW staff. I, I know we gave you some numbers earlier, and I don't know how, I think those numbers, in our opinion, seem pretty fair for now.
You mean, the cost to do it internally?
Internally, that seemed like it was a reasonable cost. I'm, I've always, you know, I was always in favor of contracting this out, I don't think we anticipated doing it in this current year budget, though, so...
But you feel comfortable that even though we cut, I know Bob, you had spoken about this, that we cut the temporaries way down, are you going to be able to contain it?
Well, the temporaries are for the, the park personnel, and we have worked out a, a plan with the, the park foreman, and they know how many people they need to hire, they've, they've sat down with, mostly with Cindy Kushner and myself, but mostly with Cindy, and we think that our numbers are, are good, and that we'll still be able, we'll provide, we'll be able to provide a acceptable level of service.
How are you...
How, how are we going about doing hiring to avoid political patronage? Not that you would do that.
Well, I am not involved in that process. Last year, you know, I, when I inherited this recreation department from Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Kidd, there was, there were things like that that went on.
I know. That was one of the reasons it was created, we used, the lawn mowing was contracted out for decades.
Right, right.
Except for the park. So, that came around, and then it became somewhat of a patronage situation.
Somewhat.
And, and...
It was constant.
I, I also think longer term, it turned out to be higher cost, because there's all kinds of hidden costs in hauling lawn mowers around all over the township and having less than skilled people that know how to jockey these machines around on and off, like a person who does it for a living, lawn service.
Yeah, but to answer your question, I'm not involved in the hiring process, I leave that up to Mr. Rapsen, who is our primary park manager at McLumpha, and also our HR director.
Okay, I don't have total confidence in that either, because it's...
Well, I, I don't either, but, Rapsen, yes, but, yeah, just, yeah, just, you know, that we ensure that, you know, that they're selecting people on merit, not on...
Right.
Who they're connected to.
Yeah. Anything else? All set, Chuck?
Oh, yeah, I'm glad you did that. We don't have to do it tonight, but we need an update on what's the work plan to finish off the manhole project? I mean, the work should have started already, the frost has been out of the ground for three or four weeks.
Well, we are in a contractual dispute with the vendor that we hired, and our attorney is working on that. It will result in a delay in the project. We're trying to work out a mutually agreeable solution with the current vendor, if that's not acceptable, then we are going to exercise our option under the bid procedures, and we will go with the next qualified bidder.
What, they feel they underbid it?
Uh, who, the current vendor? There's other issues, there's, it's litigation, pre-lit...
This is the same one that wanted payment...
Yes.
Last fall?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was an early warning sign that it was trouble.
It's a, it's a potential litigation matter, and our attorney's working on it. Okay, all set? Okay, anybody else from the audience under public comment? Going once? Need a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Supervisor, I move we adjourn.
Motion made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Clerk Vorba, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned.